Welcome to the City of Pinellas Park's City Council Meeting. Our city offers superior parks, premium recreational services, exceptional public safety resources, optimal investment opportunities, and more. Our mayor and city council welcomes you to tonight's meeting.
Good evening. It is Thursday, December 12th of 2024. We're going to call to order our city council meeting. We will have an invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please rise if you wish. And this evening, I'm going to read a letter that was posted on one of our Christian networks, a Christmas letter from Jesus. "When you look for me at Christmas, you won't need a special star. I am no longer just in Bethlehem. I am right here where you are. You may not be aware of me. Admit the celebrations. You'll have to look beyond the stores and all of the decorations. But if you take a moment from your list of things to do, to close your eyes and say a prayer, I am waiting here for you. You are the one I want to be with. You are the reason that I came. And you'll find me in the silence when I'm whispering your name. In thy name we pray. Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief and the fire crew, can I have all you guys come up?
Thank you, guys. Whereas the Pinellas Park firefighters serve our community by putting our safety above their own, firefighters often work in toxic environments of smoke, soot, and other carcinogens. And whereas, according to research, firefighters have a 9% greater chance of being diagnosed with cancer and a 14% greater chance of dying from cancer than the general population. And whereas firefighters' occupational cancers is the leading cause of line-of-duty deaths in professional firefighters, and as research has become at epidemic levels. And whereas early detection of cancer through routine screenings leads to an earlier treatment at a better disease outcome, including improvements of survival and reductions of morbidity. Therefore, I, Sandra Lee Bradbury, Mayor of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, and on behalf of the entire city council and Mrs. Claus this evening, do hereby proclaim a partnership with the Pinellas Park firefighters and Local 2193 for January of 2025 as Firefighters' Cancer Awareness Month. And witness, I set my hand to cause the seal of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, to be affixed on this 12th day of December of 2024. And I want to present this to you guys as firefighters for Pinellas Park and the Local 2193.
And Mike, can you guys chat?
Yeah, of course. I like to talk. So, since this is the last meeting in December, we went ahead for January, did this proclamation in this meeting, but for January, which is firefighter, National Firefighter Cancer Awareness Month. Partnership with our brothers and sisters in Local 2193 between the city and the fire department to make sure that everybody's aware, everybody understands the, just the increased risks that go along with some occupations, and one of those occupations is ours. The proclamation speaks to early detection. You have a couple of folks up here that are proof of that. Myself, through my wellness screening, was able to detect my prostate cancer, been cancer-free since 2020, so four years. And then Derek Tordowski, firefighter on his physicals at the city, found kidney cancer at, what was that, 22? Yeah, so 2022, Derek underwent surgery and has been cancer-free since. So Bart jumped on the wagon with that for the entire city, and now we offer those wellness screenings and physicals for the entire city. So it's a big deal, early detection is a big deal, and this is a big deal for us. So I really appreciate it. I really appreciate Lieutenant Huffman, who's also the president of Local 2193. I'm going to give you the mic.
Oh, man. Yeah, no, thank you very much. I'm Chris Huffman, Local 2193 Union President. Thank you to City Manager Bart Debold, Council Mayor, and then also our command staff with the fire department. So everything we do is for, you know, the health and safety of the public, but that's also the health and safety of the firefighters as well. So us bringing awareness to January, being the National Firefighter Cancer Awareness Month, means a lot to us. We do a lot to do what we can to prevent cancer within the firehouse. Station 36 is proof of that, kind of with like our dual-zone system, if you will, to where we can decon on one half of the station and not bring those carcinogens into the living quarters of the station as well, and then our new exhaust systems that we have. So we're doing everything that we can on our part to reduce that risk, but it is a higher-risk job. We raise a hand, and we swear to oath to protect the community, and that's what we do. So thank you guys very much.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Derek to say something.
Yes, it's completely, my name's Derek Tordowski, firefighter paramedic with the City of Pinellas Park for 26 years now. And it was the life scan that found the early cancer on me. It was stage two, and ever since then, the ball was rolling, had surgery at Moffitt, and I've been three years clean now. But super appreciative of the city for the recognition, what Bart has done for carrying that over for the other citizens, the coworkers, the council, mayor, you know, the fire department chiefs, and my brothers, you know, took care of us, and to a point where I wanted my own son to work here because of that. So super appreciative and thank you. So my son Tate Tordowski, right here. He's the Pinellas Park, the brand-new firefighter EMT for Pinellas Park, and that was one of the main reasons he has, during academy, he had stress, they were talking about cancer recognition, and he had mentioned the City of Pinellas Park actually does life scan and saves lives that way, to a point where he wanted to work here also. So follow in my footsteps. Thank you very much.
Keith, do you want to, you and Steve want to come up?
Pinellas Park Public Works, the American Public Works Association, known as APWA, is a not-for-profit international organization with more than 30,000 professionals involved in the aspect of public works. APWA serves its members by promoting professional excellence and public awareness through education, advocacy, and the exchange of knowledge. On May 7th of 2018, the Public Works Association announced the association's adoption of the National Public Works First Responder Symbol. The symbol is to be used throughout North America to recognize public works professionals' federally mandated role as first responders. President George W. Bush issued a Homeland Security Presidential Directive Number Five, mandating the management of the domestic incidents in 2003, in which the public works' response to emergencies and disasters is recognized as an absolute necessity, and the federal government is directed to include public works in all of the planning and response efforts. On November 26th of 2024, our city council unanimously approved Resolution Number 2432, recognizing the City of Pinellas Park's public works professionals as first responders. And I hope that everybody joins me in congratulating our public works department.
We have a lot, a big crew of them here, too.
First, I want to thank, as they come up, Bart, Dan, Mayor, City Council, thank you for your support on this. This means a lot. These folks do a lot of hard work each and every day. If I can, just highlight some of the things that these folks did throughout the entire storm, well, the three storms. Every single department had a hand in serving the community and serving the residents of Pinellas Park, and some, not even the residents of Pinellas Park, local or some other cities. But stormwater, transportation and stormwater did an unbelievable job during the hurricanes from debris removal. They were at, I mean, Kyle did an unbelievable job with what he did organizing debris removal from all the residents, all the businesses, his supervisors, his foreman. There's a special thing about public works, whenever you call any of these individuals and ask them for something, the first answer is, where are we going? Yes, Vinnie's not here today, but him and Lou work side by side, and when I call them and say, hey, we need to pick up some debris, they just say, give me the address, and they go do it. Our folks in traffic fixing stop signs, we're still fixing signs, we get calls all the time. They've done an unbelievable job, and I can't say enough about our utilities department. Many people don't know why this is so important as a first responder, the stuff that we do on a day-to-day basis, when there's a, when there's any type of, of course, we don't fight fires or crime or anything like that, but when there's a natural disaster, hurricane, these folks are the first people out. They're out there during the storm and right after the storm, making it safe for all the residents. Our utilities department, I want to say they worked three to five days, 24 hours straight, making sure that there was no, you know, SSOs or spills, and they did a wonderful job. Willie led them. It made me very proud to work with you guys, meter readers, parks. Everybody had a hand. I know Scott and his team were out there, making sure that all the parks, all the city facilities were cleaned up the day before everybody came back to work. We wanted to make sure that everything was cleaned up and that it was ready to get back to normal the first, that first Monday. So I want to thank everybody again. Thank you, guys, and I hope you have a wonderful Christmas. Anybody else want to say?
Hello, everybody. My name is Dreon. I've been working in public works for six months now, and I can't name a greater organization to work with. It's a great group of guys, they're very supportive. I've recently had a newborn child two months ago, and everybody on the team's been very supportive in that with my family, and I'm grateful for each and every one of y'all, and I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
And I'm going to just add one thing really quickly, and I dare to say that you guys aren't first responders, because without you, they couldn't do their job. And on top of that, there's been two incidents that I can recall right off the top of my head. One time, there was a citizen that was in distress, one of the public works guys started the CPR while the 911 was en route. Another time, one of the public works stopped somebody from trying to run when they were in the midst of an accident. So you guys are first responders all around. So thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for letting me come again this year. I'm so excited to be here. Hi, how are you? Some beautiful children are just coming in. This is so exciting. Thank you for letting me come back this year and be part, and be, sorry. And thank you for letting me come back and be part of this amazing city. It is my favorite city ever, ever, and I look forward to it every year. It's a highlight. It is actually a highlight of my whole year. I know y'all think Christmas is a highlight, but this, this just knocks it right out. I just love it so much. So much so, then when I came and I landed today at the Ag Center, it's beautiful. I mean, absolutely beautiful. And I, you know, I ramble a little bit, so you got to forgive me a little bit, but I, that windmill, I just love it. I think we're going to have to have one at the North Pole. I've already, I've already sent the picture back and told CNN, I said, I think we need this windmill. It's absolutely beautiful, and it's so easy getting in and out. Remember last year, I only got to have the two reindeer sleigh? This year, I got the four reindeer sleigh. Well, I thought I was being kind of cool, so when I go back to the North Pole, all I can talk about is the city and how amazing everybody is, and how amazing the staff is, and you guys, you know, you're a team. So we have a team back in our village up in the North Pole, we have all these elves. And so every time I go back, all I do is talk about the employees at the City of Pinellas Park, and I talk about how everything is and how amazing it is, and I think after a while, they just get tired of hearing me, and I just keep going and going. So we, last year, came down and the big guy, Santa, came with me, and we did breakfast with Santa, and we had the most amazing pancakes made by Linda. I mean, amazing. So much so that Santa went and spoke to her and got the recipe. So guess who makes those pancakes at the North Pole? I do. So now, because we think it's really, really cool that you guys, once a month, do this pancake breakfast, now we do it for the whole village in the North Pole, and I, it's just amazing. So while we were here, and we were at that beautiful public works building, Santa is going around talking to people behind the scenes. So I'm up at the North Pole, and we're walking, and I got done, and I'm walking by, and I see these amazing buildings going up, and I'm like, what's going on at the North Pole? Why, what's going on here? And I see that we have actually started an ag farm to teach the elves' kids how, where their food comes from and food to table. I'm like, well, that's pretty cool. I'm like, well, where did this, this technology come from? So I keep walking, and I hear, I hear Santa and some of the guys over there working on this building, and I go, what are you guys doing? And he, Santa looks at me, and he goes, well, this is our new operations center. And I'm like, operations center? We have an operations center? He goes, yeah, you know, we were at the public works building, and I got to talk to all this staff, and I hear this voice on this FaceTime, and I go, well, who are you talking to? He goes, oh, I'm talking to this guy named Mako. And I'm like, what? You're talking to a shark? And he's like, no, I'm talking to Steve Mako. And I'm like, oh, well, excuse me. So he goes, yeah. He goes, when you want the best, they tell me, go to Pinellas Park, they've got the best staff there is. He says, so what I do, I got his phone number. Last time you were off talking to somebody, I got his phone number, and I'm like, oh, you think you're slick, eh? So he says, yeah, he's got a whole team. And they go, all of these buildings, and they make it happen. So they've got this guy named Yaz, they've got another one, Chris Wade. I'm like, oh, wait a minute, I know Chris Wade. Have you ever had his duck? It's amazing. So he's like, ah, so we're kind of going back and forth. I'm getting a little, a little, you know, anxiety going on, a little upset, because I'm like, he's kind of encroaching on my village. This is my village. So Santa's talking to him, and he's building an operations center, so we can watch as Santa flies, because he has technology that if he hits a rainstorm, you don't want wet presents, that's not good, and you don't want the coal to get wet, because, you know, we've, we've got a few people up here that I know that are on that list that might end up with some coal, and we don't want it to be soggy. So they can do some different things. Wait, I don't pay attention to it. So we have these beautiful operations centers, thanks to Mr. Mako and his team, they do this amazing work here, the public works building, and now there's like going to be a sports complex. Guess what probably we're going to get at the North Pole this year is a sports complex, much like Sprouls is doing down here. And then you turn around, and I hear, we're watching TV, and here's your city manager, Mr. Bart, which, guess what? Santa's got his phone number. So we're watching, he goes, yeah, that's Bart. And I said, but why is he crying all the time? He's like, well, he's just a sensitive kind of guy. So I, I'm just kind of wondering what's going on. So they're talking about, there's going to be a new safety complex, and I think that's amazing, and it's going to put Pinellas Park over the top again. So here we go. I guarantee you, we're going to have a new place for our, for our reindeer to go into that pulls the wagon, and we've got this old one, you know, they pump the water, it sprays everywhere. It's not like your guys', your guys' are amazing, but I'm sure he got your phone number, and I just don't know about it yet. So as we're going along and we're talking about it, and I'm like, well, that's pretty cool, and now I figured out why I get the four reindeer, because I get here faster, and it gives me more time to sit here to get more information for Santa. So all these things that are happening and we're watching, and, you know, there's been a lot that's happened this year, a whole lot that's happened, and the staff has really, really had to pull hard to, to work and keep the citizens of Pinellas Park, this village safe, and to get through it, and we were watching it, and we were just, we were saying some prayers, we were watching everything that was going on from our operations center, mind you. And Santa calls Bart, that's how I found out he got his phone number, and, you know, we knew that you guys had lost one of your past mayors, and we're really sorry for that, Ms. Bradbury. And we also knew that there were some things going on behind the scenes, and when Santa had talked to Bart, Bart said, you know, I put people in places that uses their talent the best. And he says, that's why state representative said we've got the best city manager in the state. He said, because I allow my people to do the best of their talent and what they can do. He says, and I let them make me look really good, because without them, he won't look really good, which means all the people up here won't look really good. So it's kind of a cool effect, and Santa put that into place. He now has elves who, they say, what, what do you like to do? And they go do it. So as he's talking to Bart, he's like, hey, you know, we're thinking about you, what can we do for you, you know, we're really pulling for you, and Bart goes, I got the right people at the right place that can do everything that needs to happen. And at the same time, Bart was going through some hard times and, you know, taking care of his father who also passed, and we're really sorry to hear that. It really hurts our heart. I, we had heard that he was called the salt of the earth, so what a good man. So as we're doing all of this, and we're watching everybody work, Bart makes a comment, he goes, you know, I got this really, this really cool guy. He says, he already, six months ago, because, you know, we haven't had a hurricane in 100 years, he's already put things in place. And he says, really? He goes, yeah. Kyle, this guy named Kyle, and he turns around, and he's already secured all of the area for storm removal, he's already got everything in place. He goes, I'm not worried about it. We don't get hit by hurricanes anyway, but we're ready. So Santa tells me about it and what happens, but he has Kyle's phone number, because we have disasters also. So Kyle has done some amazing, and we have a baby who's upset, man, and that baby's going, whoa, that lady's just noticed me. So he's sitting there, and we have, I believe her name is Isla? Is that correct? Isla? Isla? And then we also have Hugh, and their mom is Jackie, and she, did you know that she- You've got the best city manager. You've got an amazing city council. You've got the best city employees. And I am blessed to be able to come and be a part of everything this time. And I believe that Kyle's parents are here. And he's smiling ear to ear because he wasn't too sure what was going on tonight. But there's been an award that's been going on here. And it, it actually went from Ed Taylor. It's called the Staying Up All Night Award. And it had gone from him and then it had gone to your city councilperson, Patricia Johnson, who she had passed away. So one year when I came down, we were talking about it. I'm like, oh, I'd love, I'd love to be, be, be a part of this. So this time, we have chosen, Santa and I, Mr. Kyle, as the Staying Up Award because of everything that you did and pulled together. The City of Pinellas Park is truly blessed to have you and that Bart had put you in the place where you needed to be. And you did it without anything. You just snapped your fingers and it was done. So thank you from Mrs. Claus and your family for being here to do what you did. You guys, come on over. This is about your family. Because without a really good, strong family, he wouldn't be able to do what he does because she's got two young kids. Hi. So thank you again for being and making our city look the best in Pinellas. This is awesome. I think he has to though because Mrs. Claus is gonna hand him the microphone.
Well, I guess I owe you, Councilman Sibyl, a thank you. Eighteen years ago, eighteen years ago, like in November, I showed up here, seventeen-year-old kid, didn't know anything. You guys gave me a chance. You've empowered me. You've helped me raise a family. I love the city and just thank you.
Well, again, thank you guys. Did you want a picture with your mom, with your mom and dad? You can, no, you can come up. All right. Well, thank you again so very much. And then, you know, did you know who Santa chose to, to help out up there? Because he says, you know, you gotta deal with all this garbage. Thank you so very much. Oh, that's very, so cool. Thank you. Do you know who Santa chose? You know, last year, we, we kinda had this person come in here, the Grinch, and kinda took over. So he said, what better person to deal with garbage but the Grinch? You know? So we turned around and we gave him a job, even at the North Pole, to help to deal with all the garbage from when we have disasters. So thank you very much. Bye-bye.
At this time, we open it up to citizens that would like to come up
and do anything that is not on the agenda this evening.
And the first one is our firefighters. They have a item that they'd like to bring up and show to the citizens, please.
Hello, how's everybody doing tonight? A lot of good stuff this year happened in the city. It's awesome. So this year, Local 2193 would decide to do something we've never done before, create a Christmas ornament. So we got one designed. We just wanted to share it on here. I know some people aren't all on Facebook or social media. So anybody that's at home, this is the ornament. I don't know if you can see it or not. We ended up using the lime green ribbon to kind of bring back the old school units we used to have on the fire trucks. We're selling them for $25. All proceeds are going through the benevolent fund. Our benevolent fund is used to help buy Thanksgiving meals for needy families, toys for kids at Christmas time. We also use it for our own guys that, you know, like Derek had cancer. We were able to purchase some shirts and then kinda do a fundraiser for him. So it's really just anybody in need. We kind, that's what we use the benevolent fund for. So that's where all the proceeds will go. If anybody would like to purchase one, you can email me at 2193vicepresident@gmail.com and I'll make sure to get ahold of you and get you an ornament. And I thank you guys again. It's been a great year and look forward to another great one next year. Have a good night.
Thanks, Mike.
And we have a citizen named John Michael, if you'd like to come up. We have Fort Mary's name and address. So name and address, if you don't mind, when you're up here, please.
My name's John Michael and I live in the Crystal Lakes Level Home Park. But I'm also the manager of Sawgrass Apartments on 78th Avenue North, which is why I'm here today. I have talked with a couple of hundred fellow Pinellas Park residents and it looks like I have a great momentum going to start a campaign to do away with Pinellas Park Police Department contract with the county. There has been dozens upon dozens of phone calls made about the juvenile delinquents that were terrorizing my tenants at the apartment building. And I even sent numerous emails to you that none more responded to. These kids are terrorizing my tenants. And I repeatedly, repeatedly asked police to, to gather them up, take them to wherever it is they claim that they lived, get their real names, get their parents on notice that this behavior has to stop. And I was mocked and laughed at and belittled. And I was also threatened by one of the sergeants. And I let numerous half-hysterical phone calls to the police chief that were, went unresponded. And frankly, I think he's incompetent and should be replaced immediately. One of the things that I was attacked verbally by the police department over and, and harassed was the use of the word juvenile delinquent. And they just rolled their eyes and laughed at me and huffed and puffed and actually yelled at me about my terminology. Finally, I ended up with a meeting with the shift commanders. And the same reaction. You use the word delinquent and they're rolling their eyes and they're huffing and puffing. One almost got up and left. And I'm being lectured to that they're trying to be mentors and they're trying to do this and to do that. That's not their job. Their job is law enforcement, not social workers. If they wanna be social workers, let them quit and go get that kind of a job. Now, you guys are responsible for oversight. You're responsible for the budget and what happens with all those tens of millions of dollars that they're using. And I don't see proper oversight. When your police officers show up at my apartment building and tell my tenants, if they don't like being harassed and abused by juvenile delinquents, they should just stay inside. I went off. My tenants are not Section 8. They're workers, they are taxpayers. And they are not gonna be told to just stay inside because your cops don't wanna do something about the delinquents. Then, a couple of weeks later, or just a couple of weeks ago, we get embarrassed on the news that juvenile delinquents harassed the church so bad they had to shut, shut down their charity. You guys are failing to oversee that department and it's time for it to go.
Vice Mayor Sibyl.
Yeah. Are you leaving? I'll give you my opinion, my friend. First of all, I don't care if they're Section 8 or whoever they are. You know, it doesn't matter. Nobody should be disrespected. Nobody's above the law. But I'll tell you what, my personal opinion is I'm a councilperson. I think we have the best chief, the best department there is. I'm not interested in bringing in the sheriff. So they're not gonna do any better job. And my feelings is, you can get all the signatures you want. It's not gonna change my mind. Because they do try to mentor the kids also. You know, they just don't wanna go out there and talk down to them. You know, they try to mentor them and get, build a relationship with them. You know, I cannot believe any officer said that, if you don't wanna be harassed by the juvenile delinquents, stay in your house.
Well, I'll get the tenet, I'll get the tenet he said that to, to, to write you about it then.
Well, I'll tell you what. If the police officer tells me he did it, I'll believe it.
Oh, I see.
But that's it.
But the rest of us are just liars?
No, I'm not saying you're a liar. No, that's not what I'm trying to say.
Well, you just simply said.
I'm just trying to tell you, our men and women who wear that badge, they do a good job. They put their lives on the line and they go to all the calls. And you know what? At times, things might be said between people, but they're there to do the best and to keep everybody safe and to protect not only residents, but try to transform those, what you're calling juvenile delinquents. You know, so I just wanna let you know, my perspective as a councilperson, we've got the best police department there is and I'm not interested in the sheriff's office at all.
Good for you.
Yep.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to come up and speak on any items that are not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to Section Two, Approval of Minutes. Councilmember Butler.
May I make a question? We approve regular council minutes of the November 26, 2024 meeting as on file in the city clerk's office.
Second to motion.
Motion has been made in second. All those in favor, cash your ballots. It's not there.
It's coming.
Okay. Thank you. And before we move on to Section Three, Public Hearings, I want to say in advance, thank you to our city clerk's department for helping Mrs. Claus get all of her information together for a city council meeting. I think this is the third, or is it the fourth?
I think it's the third.
The third one time that she has come to help us with our city council meetings. So thank you to the city clerk's office for getting the paperwork to her so that she is up to speed on what we're voting on tonight.
Thank you. And motion carried unanimously on the approval minutes.
Thank you. Moving on to Section Three, Public Hearings, Item P1.
Item P1, ordinance number 4280. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida pertaining to health spas, health clubs, and fitness classes. Amending Chapter 18 Land Development Code to remove health spas and add health clubs and fitness classes as commercial uses. Amending Section 18-1502.2 definitions. Amending Table 18-1518.3 Authorized Uses in CN District. Amending Table 18-1520.3 Authorized Uses in V1 District. Amending Table 18-1521.3 Authorized Uses in MXD District. Amending Table 18-1522.3 Authorized Uses in TC District. Amending Table 18-1523.3 Authorized Uses in CH District. Amending Table 18-1524.3 Authorized Uses in M1 District. Amending Table 18-1525.3 Authorized Uses in IH District. Amending Chapter 18, Article 15 to create a new Section 18-1530.32 Health Club Use. Amending Section 18-1531.10 List of Conditional Uses and Requirements to Include Requirements for Fitness Classes. Amending Section 18-1532.9 Minimum Off-Street Parking Space Requirements, Providing for the Inclusion of Such Amended Ordinance in the Land Development Code of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, Providing for Severability, Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you. Item P1, ordinance number 4280. Public Hearing and First Reading. I am opening the public hearing and turning it over to Megan.
Good evening. My name's Megan Montesino, Development Review Manager, and I'll be presenting P1, which is LDC-0624-00010. The request is to amend sections and tables of the Land Development Code to remove health spas as a permitted use in various zoning districts and establish and add regulations for health clubs and fitness classes. Proposed definitions for fitness classes. A facility offering class-based fitness programs with a limited number of participants that are instructor-led. These facilities are not considered schools of non-academic curriculum. Health clubs will be an indoor facility offering memberships that primarily focus on individual fitness or training, typically provides exercise classes, fitness equipment, a weight room, indoor spa. These facilities may include ancillary facilities such as swimming pool, whirlpool, sauna, limited retail and snack bar, basketball, tennis, pickleball, racquetball, and/or handball courts. Health spas, the removal of health spas will be from the zoning districts of V1, MXD, TC, and CH. There is currently no definition or regulations for health spas in our code. In general, the use of spas would still be permitted under the use of personal services. For the proposed use of fitness classes, they will be added to the zoning districts of CN, V1, MXD, TC, CH, M1, and IH. The proposed parking requirement for fitness classes is one space per 200 square, uh, square feet of GFA or by approval of the Planning and Development Services Director. Fitness classes will be conditional uses. It will be administrative approval. And when abutting and/or functionally abutting a residential zoning district, the following regulations shall apply. No overhead sliding or other type of similar doors shall face abutting residential zoning districts. Ten-foot wide landscape buffer along abutting residential zoning districts with a solid six-foot fence, a continuous hedge, and one tree per 25 linear feet of perimeter area or fraction thereof. Outdoor activity areas shall be at least 15 feet from abutting residential zoning districts. Hours for outdoor activities shall be limited to 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Per current code, any requested waiver of a conditional use requirement must go before city council for approval. For health clubs, health clubs will be a permitted use in the zoning districts of V1, MXD, TC, CH, M1, and IH. The proposed parking requirement for health clubs is one space per 200 square feet of GFA. The new section will be created, 18-1530.32, for health club use regulations. The proposed regulations will be outdoor fitness activities are prohibited. No overdoor sliding, overhead sliding or other type of similar doors shall face abutting residential zoning districts and building separation must meet Florida Building Code. Applicants who request to waive one or more of these requirements must go to city council for approval. Staff recommends approval of this case. And on November 7th, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this case. And I am here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Megan. Is city council have any questions of Megan on this item? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on this item?
10-foot wide landscape buffer along abutting residential zoning districts with a solid six-foot fence, a continuous hedge, and one tree per 25 linear feet of perimeter area or fraction thereof. Outdoor activity areas shall be at least 15 feet from abutting residential zoning districts. Hours for outdoor activities shall be limited to 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Per current code, any requested waiver of a conditional use requirement must go before city council for approval. For health clubs, health clubs will be a permitted use in the zoning districts of V1, MXD, TC, CH, M1, and IH. The proposed parking requirement for health clubs is one space per 200 square feet of GFA. The new section will be created, 18-1530.32, for health club use regulations. The proposed regulations will be outdoor fitness activities are prohibited. No overdoor sliding, overhead sliding or other type of similar doors shall face abutting residential zoning districts, and building separation must meet Florida Building Code. Applicants who request to waive one or more of these requirements must go to city council for approval. Staff recommends approval of this case, and on November 7, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this case. And I am here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Megan. Does city council have any questions of Megan on this item? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on this item? Name and address for the record, please, Gary.
Gary McDowell, 9975 66 Way North. My only concern would be the outdoor hours of operation. It doesn't specify what days. It's 10 o'clock. If it's abutting up to a residential area on a Saturday night, or Sunday night, or Friday night, 10 o'clock, I think, is a little long for people that would have to listen to the outside noise going on at those hours. My only concern. And I don't think it should be occurring on, like, Sunday or something.
And just to also clarify, they will still have to meet the noise ordinance, which does differentiate, you know, weekend noise versus, you know, weekday noise. But that's also why it's a conditional use. So, if staff or city council see that the time, you know, that is recommended for that conditional use isn't adequate, they can make a condition based on that to change it.
I mean, well, my concern would be that the outside noise would be outside activities if you're playing volleyball, or soccer, or something like that. 10 o'clock at night is kind of a late time to be out there up against a residential area.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this item? I will close the first public hearing at its first reading and entertain a motion by city council. Councilmember Butler.
May I make a motion? We pass ordinance number 4280, public hearing, first reading.
Second the motion.
Motion has been made in second. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to Item P2, ordinance number 4281.
Item P2, ordinance number 4281, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Nellis County, Florida, repealing Article 6 Signs of the Land Development Code of the City of Pinellas Park in its entirety and replacing it with a new Article 6, to be known as the City of Pinellas Park Sign Ordinance, providing for legislative findings of fact, formalizing the intent, scope, and purpose of the sign code, establishing definitions, providing for computation of sign area and sign height, prohibiting certain signs, establishing regulations for non-conforming signs, establishing regulations for illuminated signs, providing for permitting of signs, establishing a variance process and criteria, providing for the maintenance of signs, establishing an appeals process, providing for enforcement, establishing certain setback requirements, establishing sign regulations for all zoning districts within the city, providing for a transition period for all permits issued prior to the effective date of this ordinance, providing illustrations of certain sign types, providing for separability, providing for the inclusion of such ordinances in the Land Development Code of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, providing an effective date.
Thank you. Item P2, ordinance number 4281s, first public hearing and first reading. I am opening the public hearing and turning it over to Megan again.
Good evening again. My name's Megan Montesino, Development Review Manager, and I'll be presenting P2, which is LDC-0923-00011. The request is to repeal Article 6 Signs of the Land Development Code and replace it with a new Article 6, to be known as City of Pinellas Park Sign Ordinance. Major changes include clarifying that sign permit applications are now done electronically, resolving potential conflicts related to appeals, and updates to enforcement of the sign ordinance. The intent of the proposed sign regulations is to comply with the Supreme Court ruling that signs with content-based restrictions on speech violate the First Amendment, ensure that the residents, visitors, and emergency responders can safely navigate through the city, and enhance the visual environment of the city. Definitions, Section 18-603, outdated terms in the code such as zone lot and multi-prism sign have been removed. Definitions of sign types based on content have been removed, such as garage/yard sale sign, a nonprofit directional sign. New terms have been added to the definition sections such as drive-through sign and electronic reader board. Prohibited signs, Section 18-606, the LDC will be updated to prohibit signage that causes safety concerns, such as signs that obstruct, conceal, hide, or obscure from view any official traffic control device, and illuminate signs that cause glare or impair the vision of motorists and interfere with motorists' ability to safely operate their vehicles. Conforming sign, Section 18-607, the nonconforming sign section has been updated to add a nonconforming sign that is substantially damaged or destroyed shall be removed or brought into full compliance with the standards in this article. Sign permit, Section 18-613 and 18-614, the following are proposed to be added or updated. Temporary sign application fee increased from $25 to $100. Variances will now be reviewed by the Board of Adjustment. Sign variance fee has been updated to follow the fees and charges in Section 18-1501.31, and applications must now be submitted online. Failure to comply, Section 18-621, compliance language has been modified to state, when determined that an illegal sign poses an imminent threat to health, safety, or welfare of the public, the city may remove the sign. Property owners are liable for costs incurred for the removal of such signs and must remit payment to the city within 60 days, or the city can place a special assessment lien against the property. And if not paid after 30 days from lien recrutation, the city may foreclose on the lien in the same manner as a mortgage as provided by law. Setback requirement, Section 18-625, the following language has been added. The minimum setback for any property line for permanent and temporary freestanding signs in all zoning districts shall be 10 feet unless otherwise provided. Residential zoning districts, Section 18-629, the following has been added. The rest will remain the same. Temporary sign regulations permitted up to three times per year for up to five days each, not to exceed a total of 32 square feet in area for all sign faces, and maximum height six feet. Subdivision Monument Identification Sign Regulations, max two signs for each platted subdivision entrance, max sign area of 24 square feet per each sign face, not to exceed a total of 48 square feet per sign. Max height for a freestanding sign shall not exceed four feet, and no setback is required, and no sign is allowed to be in the visibility triangle. Republic Commercial and Industrial Zoning District, Section 18-630, same, these are the following that have been added, the rest will remain the same. Window signs permitted not to exceed 25% of the total window area. Temporary sign regulations permitted for two 60-day periods per year plus additional 30 days when a BTR is issued, limited to 32 square feet for single-face signs, and 64 square feet for double-face signs, height of eight feet if freestanding, and not to exceed roof height if attached. Subdivision Monument Identification Sign Regulations, max of two signs per entrance, max sign area is 48 square feet per each sign face, not to exceed a total of 96 square feet per sign, six-foot height for a freestanding sign, and no setback is required, and no sign is allowed in the visibility triangle. Staff recommends approval of this case, and on November 7, Planning and Zoning also recommended approval of this case. And I am here if you have any questions.
Vice Mayor Sibyl.
Yes, Megan. Going back to the window signs. Does that, like, if you go by a lot of these small grocery stores, you can't even see in because of all the...
Right.
Does that include them?
So, that will include them from, once this is approved, moving forward. So, if they remove all those signs and then try to come in with new signs, they'll have to conform with this, with the 25%. But if they keep what's there now, they'll be considered nonconforming.
Thank you.
Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. Megan, where does, like, political signs fall with all these?
Political signs, that goes into the First Amendment, so that does not, is not included in this. When it comes to temporary signs, that's more for business and commercial-type businesses. So, for political signs, that doesn't fall under this.
So, the Supreme Court thing that we're conforming with doesn't allow us to regulate those at all? Is that what you're telling me?
From my understanding, the attorneys, or Erica, I don't know if she is...
What we would regulate is the size and shape of the sign, not necessarily what would be written on it.
But so, the timeframe of signs can be up relative to elections and stuff?
Yes.
We can do that?
We can regulate that. Yes.
Thank you.
Question in lines with what Councilmember Butler was talking about. And the city clerks can probably chime in on this as well. Campaign signs have a separate state statute.
Right.
So, that is separate from what I'm going to say, are advertising signs for local businesses.
Right.
Any other questions of Megan at this time?
Well, let me just chime in to say that, if I may, that your sign code was written by your sign consultants to be in accordance with all First Amendment requirements and Supreme Court requirements.
In existing Florida statutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on this item? Seeing none, I will close the first public hearing and first reading and entertain a motion.
I'm new to these new kinds of things, and I can't find them.
They don't have these up in the North Hall?
No, these are different things. During my conference. That's true. You know, that's so. Yeah, it's, um... Thanks. Thank you. I make a motion that we pass ordinance number 4281, public hearing, first reading.
Santa's going to get you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second motion by Mrs. Claus, second by Councilmember Butler. Please cast your ballots.
You're such a long pause.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to Item P3.
Item P3, Resolution Number 24-33, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Nellis County, Florida pursuant to Section 196.197830 Florida statutes, electing to not exempt property under Section 196.19783D1A Florida statutes, commonly known as the Live Local Act property tax exemption, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Item P3, Resolution Number 24-33's, public hearing, first and final reading. I am opening the public hearing and turning it over to Erica.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and Mrs. Claus. I'm Erica Lindquist, Planning and Development Services Director. Talking about the Live Local Tax Exemption Resolution. So, certain municipalities now have the option to opt out of providing the Live Local Act property tax exemption required per Section 196.197830 Florida statutes. In order to opt out, municipalities must be identified in the most recent Schimberg Center for Housing Studies annual report as having more affordable units than needed. This year, the Schimberg report listed the Tampa Bay MSA as having more available affordable units than the number of renter households with incomes below 120% AMI. Therefore, jurisdictions in our region, which includes Pinellas, Pasco, Hillsborough, and Hernando counties, are currently eligible to opt out of providing this exemption. And what the exemption is, is 75% of property tax exemption for units affordable to households with incomes up 80 to 120% AMI, and the exemption's based on the taxable value. The properties that would qualify for the exemption would be either multifamily or mixed use with residential, a building with more than 70 affordable units, and only the affordable units are eligible for the exemption, and newly constructed developments within the past five years. So, the Resolution 24-33 that we're talking about tonight would allow Pinellas Park to opt out of providing that tax exemption. It does require a 2/3 vote for adoption, and it would take effect on January 1, 2025. It must be renewed prior to expiration, which would be January 1, 2027. However, just a note, if the Tampa Bay MSA is found to have a deficit of affordable units in the next Schimberg report, which probably will be released this month, the opt-out would no longer be valid. Thank you, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Do the city council have any questions of Erica on this item? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at its first and final reading and entertain a motion by city council. Councilmember Butler.
May I make a motion? We adopt Resolution Number 24-33, public hearing, first and final reading.
Second the motion.
Motion has been made in second. All those in favor, please cast your ballots. We will be moving on to Section 4, Consent Agenda.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to Section 4, Consent Agenda, and Item C4 is being moved to Item R1 because I do have a conflict and will not be voting on this, and I have filled out the proper forms.
We'll talk about it at that time, too.
Yes, sir.
Item number C1 is to approve the reappointment of Ms. Charles L. Tingler to serve on the Pinellas Park Water Management District Board of Directors for a term to expire on December 31, 2027. Item number C2 is authorization for the City of Pinellas Park to accept a right-of-way easement from Cortland Capital Group LLC for the property located at 7635 55th Street. Item number C3 is authorization for the City of Pinellas Park to accept a right-of-way easement from Doc Thack for the property located at 7041 54th Street North. Item number C4 is indicated by the mayor as being moved to item number R1. Item number C5 is authorization for the City of Pinellas Park to accept a right-of-way easement from Doc Thack for the property located at 7023 54th Street North. Item number C6 is ordinance number 4282. Ordinance number 4282, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Nellis County, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending Chapter 18 Land Development Code pertaining to dumpsters, amending Section 18-1530.20 dumpsters, providing for the inclusion of such amended ordinance in the code of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, providing for separability, providing for an effective date. Item number C7 is Resolution Number 24-34. Resolution Number 24-34, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Nellis County, Florida, authorizing the city manager to submit an urban and community forestry hurricane Ian recovery grant program application through the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, Division of Administration, to conduct a tree maintenance program, providing for a 20% match, providing for acceptance of such grant, and providing for an effective date. Item number C8 is to approve the authorization for the City of Pinellas Park to grant a utility easement Frontier Florida LLC for the property located at 7690 59th Street North. Item number C9 is to approve authorization for the city manager to sign a purchase agreement between the City of Pinellas Park and Axos Naski Black for a sculpture. Item number C10 is to approve authorization for the city manager to sign a lease agreement between the City of Pinellas Park and George Redkey's for a sculpture to be located at 7770... 7770 52nd Street North. Item number C.11 is Resolution Number 24-35, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, supporting the citywide lift station emergency alternative, alternate, alternate power project, authorizing the city manager to sign and submit an attestation form and backup documents to the Florida House of Representatives for fiscal year 2025, 2026, House Appropriations Funding, designating the city manager or his designee as the official liaison agent, confirming the amount of grant funds requested, confirming the city's commitment for a cash match, and providing for an effective date. Item number C.11 is Resolution Number 24-36, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, supporting the Harmony Heights Community Safety Project, authorizing the city manager to sign and submit an attestation form and backup documents to the Florida House of Representatives for fiscal year 2025, 2026, House Appropriations Funding, designating the city manager or his designee as the official liaison agent, confirming the amount of grant funds requested, confirming the city's commitment for a cash match, and providing an effective date. Item number C.13 is authorization for the mayor to sign a contract for the purchase of real property from Caesaron Enterprises LLC, and that's for property located at 6001 Park Boulevard. Item number C.14 is to approve the selection of the City Council member Ricky Butler to serve on the Evaluation Committee for Review and Evaluation of Proposals for RFP 25/001 for Investment Advisory Services. Item number C.15 is to approve authorization to purchase under ASC 43190000-NASPO Contract Mock Alert Station Alerting Systems from Motorola Solutions, Inc., Chicago, Illinois, at a total cost of $192,646. Item number C.16 is authorization for the mayor to sign a subgrant agreement and contract for an FDOT speeding and aggressive driving enforcement grant with the Florida Department of Transportation. Item number 17 is authorization for the mayor and police chief to sign an Extension of Services Agreement with Axon Enterprises, Inc. for the Police Department. Item number C.18 is to approve authorization for the mayor to sign a five-year renewal contract for janitorial services for city buildings with Elite Service Solutions, 6625 35th Street North, Pinellas Park, Florida, in the amount of $422,076.48. Item number C.19 is to approve authorization for approval and acceptance of change order number one and final payment for barn construction at Patty Johnson Farm provided by Capra Construction, Inc. Item number C.20 is Resolution Number 24-37, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, pertaining to the appointment of the city attorney and assistant city attorneys, authorizing the rates for such attorneys, providing for transition, providing that this resolution supersedes any other resolutions pertaining to the appointment of city attorneys or assistant city attorneys, and providing an effective date. And that's the end of the consent agenda. I would say for the benefit of the council, as you've already met them, and also for the public, that in Item C.20, the resolution, Randy Moore and Jay Dadeau are both present tonight. And I would also say that somebody, I guess, is trying to get me out of here quick because I don't have a name tag tonight. That's the end of the consent agenda.
Mrs. Claus.
Thank you, Mayor Bradbury. Regarding the consent agenda, I would like to make a motion to pass, approve, or adopt whichever action is appropriate, Items C.1 through C.20, inclusive with Item C.4 being moved to Item R.1 and Item C.6 being first reading prior to public hearing, and Items C.7, C.11, C.12, and C.20 being first and final reading. The next public hearing will be held in council chambers on Thursday, January the 9th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m.
Mayor, I second Mrs. Claus's motion.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on these items on the consent agenda, or any comments? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Push the buttons.
Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to Section 5, our regular agenda item, which was C.4 and is now going to be R.1, and I have filled out the proper paperwork. I work for the company who is going to be submitting this plat this evening, so I will not be voting on it.
And you are announcing that you do have a conflict of interest, and that is because of your employment for Northside Engineering.
That is correct.
And you will not be voting. And Item Number R.1 is request for the mayor to sign a final plat approval for Pelican and 09-30-16-70992-100-0402.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on this item? The City Council have any questions of staff on this item?
Can you give me just a moment, Mayor, please?
Yes, sir.
Trying to bring something up. You don't have a drawing.
This is the previous residence and hotel that was converted to apartment complex at Almerton Road and 49th Street. Which also includes the retention pond that's on the site. It's part of Turtle Creek's subdivision. Do I have a motion? Counselor Member Butler?
Haven't done this before this way, so I'm just gonna try. Make a motion, we approve final plat 0324-00003.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And please cast your ballots.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries 4-1, with Mayor Bradbury abstaining.
Thank you. At this time, we have no additional items, so I will turn it over to Vice Mayor Sibyl if you'd like to...
Oh, thank you, Mayor. It's an exciting time of the year, looking forward to the parade. As usual, it's gonna be a fantastic event, like always. And I just want to tell everybody who's ever watching or here that I do stand behind our city manager, our police chief, and all of our sworn police officers for the job they do, and, you know, nothing against the sheriff, he does a great job also, but, you know, we can take care of our own here, and I'm sure whatever that gentleman was told is what the person thought they heard. But I cannot believe that any of our officers would just tell somebody to go back in the house if they don't want to be bothered by juvenile delinquents. And I just hope everybody has a happy and safe Christmas, and we'll see you next year.
Mrs. Claus. Hi, thank you so much, and this is so exciting, and I'm so thankful for being welcomed here. And just remember that during this time of the season, to check on your neighbors, check on your friends, check on your family, make sure that everybody's doing okay. There's a lot of people sometimes that don't reach out, and they just need somebody to come and listen to them, maybe just say hello, so, and Merry Christmas to all. And we will be keeping tabs, because you know, Santa's got this great operations center that he watches everybody, thanks to you guys helping him, and...
Ricky, too, getting cold this year.
That's Santa's job. I can't tell what Santa's is, but I can tell after the Grinch last year, I know you are.
I know.
But, um, but anyway, but truly, truly thank you all for everything, and turning it over to the next.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would get in trouble probably if I didn't wish my mom a happy birthday, so today is my mom's birthday.
Happy birthday!
And I know she's watching, because she told me I look good in my suit tonight, so that's always the indication, she's checking in on me. So happy birthday, Mom. There is a parade this weekend. It's, it is gonna be a great one. We've got six marching bands, we've got the awesome original Second Time Arounders, and then we've got Pinellas Park High School, Osceola, Hollins, Northeast, and missing one, Seminole. So always a great event, can't have a parade without bands, so we're happy about that. Appreciate the city's support on all that. Congratulations to Public Works on your designation. I know we voted on it last meeting, it was one of my favorite votes so far, because, yes, I, at the ribbon cutting earlier this, or sorry, the groundbreaking for the public safety complex, I talked about how our number-one job is public safety and delivering those services, and that is true, but everybody needs Public Works, whether they know it or not. Fortunately, not everybody needs police and fire all the time, but it's harsh to say, but it's a fact, the toilets flush, things like that, so proud to have you guys as part of that designation. Tougher topic, I just want to ask everybody to keep Jerry Gardner and his family in your thoughts and prayers during this time. Speaking of Public Works, he was a phenomenal employee as they prepared for his home-going, a huge part of so many great things in our community, and there was really nowhere that, in this entire community, that his fingerprints aren't on, and we're all better for it, so please keep them in your thoughts. He was very involved in the parade. I am going to have my bright red parade shirt on and camo suspenders on Saturday night for Jerry, so don't look at me sideways when you see that, but he was all about those, so we're doing the parade for him this year. And I think that's all I got. Thank you.
Wasn't he the first city ambassador we had? Jerry the first ambassador?
No.
Yeah, he is. That's the tomato guy.
The tomato guy.
Tomato man, yeah.
Mr. Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. Join in with the rest of the council in wishing everybody a Merry Christmas and happy holidays. Keep an eye out for each other. Remember that peace begins with us, and you can make a difference, one person can make a difference, so thank you.
Ms. Lana.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I just want to remind everybody, the Teen Works Food Drive is still going on until December 18th, so the drop-off locations are at City Hall, Senior Center, Park Station, and Forbes and Broderick Rec. Center. And then also, I'd like to remind everyone that the all-city offices will be closed on December 24th and 25th in observance of Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, and then also on January 1st in observance of New Year. Thank you.
Ms. Lynn.
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to let everyone know that the clerk's office is selling the fire department ornaments, so if you'd like to come by City Hall, you can purchase those from us as well.
It's a conspiracy.
There's still a quick opportunity to stop by Forbes this evening, get some hot cocoa, engage in some snowball fights. I do believe all the hayride seats are taken, but there's fun stuff inside the building for everybody going until 9:00. And this Saturday at the farm, Mrs. Claus, there is the Discovery Day that has 4-H and other really farm gardening-related activities happening that starts at 10:00 this Saturday, and lots of still continuing holiday events next week at the library. I believe Councilman Butler is reading to the kids soon at the library as part of that, so lots of good stuff still this month.
I think you have a few things coming up, sir. Shop with the Cop?
Yes.
Hello?
Next Saturday.
Can you hear me? Yep. Next Saturday, we do have Shop with the Cop at Target. It is our annual, our biggest annual event. It's an opportunity for us to give back, so we take in families, families that are shoveling a little bit this year, you know, give kids a Christmas, so we're, it's the one we look forward to. So our community policing unit spearheads it, and we're gonna be out there next weekend, and we're looking forward to it. We have over 100 volunteers. How many families, Bree?
A little, 16 families.
16 families, so it's our, it's our opportunity to give back, and we do it in partnership with everybody else in the city as well, so we're looking forward to it.
Anything else to announce, other than buy these? Well, Mrs. Claus, thank you again for coming to our council meeting. It's a blessing for us to get a little bit of the North Pole down here this time of year, as long as we don't have the snow, but, you know, the spirit of Christmas, everybody moves to Florida to get away from the snow. Mr. Denhart, thank you very much for serving us. I know you're going to continue to serve us, and bringing this young group in to assist when you're doing your travels. And Ms. Zoe's gonna have fun, and Ricky, not as much this year, but next year at Christmas, like their little ones.
Yeah, we're having fun this year.
Already teaching her how to open things?
She's gonna figure it out.
So, and yes, we want to tell Ms. Carol a wonderful Happy Birthday today, and we hope that everybody has a blessed holiday season, Merry Christmas, and we will see you in 2024. We ask everybody to be, yeah, 2025, but we'll see you on the, you know, the parade route, you know, this Saturday. But we hope everybody is blessed, as was discussed earlier, and one thing that Councilwoman Reed always mentions is to check on your neighbors, not only during the holidays, but just on a regular basis to make sure they're all okay. The meeting is adjourned, be blessed.